I'd like to call the meeting of the Willetts City Council to order for February forty, twenty-fourth. Could we all rise and join, imagine the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get the keeper of the record here. Kathy, can you do the roll, please?
Yes.
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 Madam?
Yes.
Here.
A couple of housekeeping items. Number one, the council did meet in a special meeting at five o'clock, which I did not participate in. A closed session item involving REMCO. And was there anything to report out of that?
No, there was not, but we didn't have time to complete the discussion. Item two B, which is noticed as conference regarding anticipated litigation, we didn't have time to meet on that, so we will have that discussion closed session immediately following this meeting.
That is, that is an item that has nothing to do with REMCO.
Correct.
So I'll be participating in that. The second housekeeping item is we do have an amendment to the agenda, on the amended agenda that's in front of me. I see that we need to consider adding item four E to the consent calendar, and it's to approve a contract amendment with local government commission increasing the contract amount from fifty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars to the full ground amount of one hundred and seventy thousand, six eighty in accordance with invoicing billing mechanism established from, for the Willetts Main Street Quarter Enhancement Project to allow the fiscal management and payment to subcontractor RWT or Wallace Roberts Todd. Adrian, you want to just expand on that briefly?
Sure. So back in November, the city-
And why it needs to be done as an emergency?
In November, the city council approved a contract with local government commission as part of the planning grant that we received on, for the Main Street Quarter Enhancement Project. And subsequent to that action, we made a decision to have LGC subcontract with the consultant Wallace Roberts Todd, rather than the city directly contracting with them. And this was, this decision was made really to, LGC was in a better position to provide that oversight, since we were leaning on in-house staffing for that. They have experience in doing that, and so they proceeded down that path and then realized, just yesterday, I got a call, that the contract that we have with them doesn't give them the funding beyond their own services, and so we need to extend the full funding of the grant that we were awarded to LGC so they can pay the consultant, because the consultant is invoicing them directly rather than the city. So the, there's no fiscal impact to the city. This is just a housekeeping mechanism to allow for payment of the consultant.
And this project is underway. We have billing going on as we speak.
Yes.
So we need, we need to take care of this.
I'll move, we amend the agenda?
Is there a second to that?
Okay.
Is there any protest here for us to do that? Any public comment? Take a roll call vote. We need a four-fifths vote to add an item to the, to the agenda.
Council, strong?
Yes.
Madam?
Yes.
It's pretty controversial, but I'll say yeah.
Mayor Burton?
It's a free vote, I can go either way.
Yeah, you can go.
Yes. So that's going to be added to the consent calendar, which we will be at momentarily, and right now, we're in the public communications part of our meeting. If I'm staying, I tend to jump around sometimes. I'm not hearing anybody saying I'm not. I did that.
No more comments.
That one, I'm sorry. Oh, that's right, I did do that. I did jump around. So, yeah, thank you. A week or so ago, it was in the paper, pretty well publicized, that a gentleman that has done a lot of work for the city over the last four or five years, three or four years, he was our lead counsel in a prolonged disagreement with our neighbor up the hill, man named Steve Mitchell, native of Eureka, and working in a law firm in Santa Rosa. Had a untimely passing, so I would like, in recognition of, he's a great guy, I think we all admired him, all respected his work, we respected his, his ethics and his straightforward nature and hard work on behalf of the city, so we'd like to take a moment to remember Steve and, and, you know, the, the work he brought to the city and the friendship he brought to us as well. So just a little moment of silence for Steve Mitchell. Okay, thank you. Now we will move to public communications. These are for anybody that would like to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda. No action will be taken. We're really limited to any kind of back and forth conversation. There isn't much, we'll listen, we may not have much to respond, that we can respond to a non-agendized item, but if anybody'd like to address the council, come up to the podium and introduce yourself. Those ladies have lots of practice at it. If you're shy, just follow-
I don't know if I can do this. I'm Lynn Kinley with the Willetts Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to invite all of you and staff to come tomorrow night, from 5:30 to 7:30, to the Willetts Center for the Arts mixer. It's a chamber mixer, and we would love to have you come. I think you're going to find a lot of fun things that they're planning on doing, and we'd love to see you all there. And I'm going to write my name. At the time, 5:30 to 7:30.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Anybody else in public comment? Second, third, and final call? Okay, so we will then move up to item three A, which is a presentation by EDFC. I see just the man that can do it.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the invitation. I come before you to talk about what's been going on economic development-wise in our region, and also for you to reconsider our membership at the EDFC.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh yeah, I'm John Curry, the Executive Director of the Economic Development and Financing Corporation. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit community development financial institution, and our mission is connecting money and ideas with entrepreneurs to create sustainable prosperity in Lake and Mendocino Counties. So I, we have done some amazing things, probably since the last few times we met. EDFC's sustainability was in question. We've now gone from one loan program to three loan programs, which include a micro lending program. We've deployed over three-quarters of a million dollars in the last calendar year. We've done something extraordinary, is that we leverage community capital to create a direct public offering for a wool mill in Ukiah. And really, this is a blueprint to do projects like a meat processing facility, maybe revitalizing some of our industrial spaces. And so this was a project really catalyzed by Willetts and Willetts Economic Localization, where the impetus to want to invest locally was really brought forward, and EDFC Board took it to heart and looked at a way to do it. So we raised over three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Nineteen investors in Willetts produced over forty-eight thousand dollars. Let me just double-check the number here. Yeah, nineteen investors in the Willetts invested over forty-nine thousand dollars to this project. So these are type of projects that EDFC takes on. We also are being more of an advocate regionally. I've been, been appointed to the Mendocino County Tourism Commission and the Sonoma Mendocino Economic Development District, and it's EDFC's voice, as an economic development voice for the region. And it's my opinion that with the changes coming up in the North County, that with the bypass happening, tourism's going to be important, and I'm making a point to make sure that Willetts is represented in terms of the tourism efforts. And the tourism effort is also enhanced by the fact that the same things that bring people here to visit are the reasons they're going to come here and open a business or keep a business here. And as far as the Sonoma Mendocino Economic Development District, we saw redevelopment money go away, and kind of in its place is this ability to access economic development administration funds at lower rates of matching and things like that, as long as we have a Economic Development District SEDs. And it would be, it's in EDFC's best interest to advocate for the city of Willetts and try and allocate funds through the EDA and in planning for our region. So it's these type of projects that your membership to EDFC keeps our ability to continue doing this advocacy. Another big one is broadband. Broadband Alliance has been a huge success in terms of advocacy. The, we've reached out, we've spoken to Congress, we've made it very apparent some of the deficiencies in our area. And the Broadband Alliance has now brought AT&amp;T to the table, and really talking about how we change the conversation from building out infrastructure and putting fiber to every house, which is almost physically impossible, but how do we get faster broadband in our urban corridors that you can attract viable 21st century businesses to your urban corridors? And how do we bridge the digital divide for, for students and kids of low income? So again, these are advocacy programs which your membership to EDFC will help us further. Given that, I think that EDFC successes and our innovative way of looking at things would be, we'd like to reinstate our partnership.
Thank you. We are coming up on the budget process and would be certainly part of our conversations.
Thank you very much, any consideration. And again, Willetts has been very, even though you haven't contributed funds, your board members have been very active, and I think that although we don't have a lot of loan activity, I think this direct public offering is innovative and revolutionary to the point where I've been invited to Oregon to talk about this process, Colorado, and places that want to replicate what we've done here.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Do we have any questions of this, on this presentation?
Um, no question, but a, more of a comment. John was also able to present at the chamber's Women in Business Program about the investment opportunity, and there was certainly some interest. And I think it would be great if we, as council members, could encourage local entrepreneurs from our, from the Willetts area to access EDFC's capital if they, if they qualify. You know, we haven't had a lot of that business activity from up here, so I would love to see, I'd love to see some loan dollars coming our way.
Yeah, and you know, I, you know, the taboo subject is that the cannabis market and economy may come online, and there's going to be a need for financing compliance, and there are going to be some innovative things that we're trying to talk to with the state about how to finance that compliance, because the biggest worry is to get people to address the workforce, the environmental and other things that are probably going to come down the pike if this thing is legalized. And banks can't handle it right now, the federal government can't handle it, but it's through community localization that we're going to be able to address some of those concerns.
Is there, I know that Scoops is one of the projects that was given an EDFC loan-
Right.
-here. Are there any other currently in?
I have two loans that are pending in the Willetts area. Again, economic, economic activity is better. We also have a micro lending program, which is fifty thousand dollars or less, which comes with mandatory technical assistance, free of charge. So getting the word out to that, you know, we, we were awarded one of the largest awards in the country, it's six hundred thousand dollars, and we're, we've probably gone through three-quarters of it thus far.
And what was the, what was the cutoff for the micro?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming up.
Just one, one comment. Well, it's important to say longevity-
Maybe I'm not running this meeting.
And really, the longevity of the, of the organization, and I can tell you that we, my husband and I, for our business, we also had a loan with EDFC, and it was wonderful, you know, for our business. So, you know, it's not just people that are doing it now, but EDFC has been around for a while, and it's blown money out to a lot of folks here, so it's really, it's-
But I want to point out, it's not just the lending, it's also the economic development incubation. We're still pursuing the meat processing plant, and the direct public offering was really the third leg of, of the stool. We first needed to find land, we think we have the land. We need to find an operator, we have an operator, but it's really how do we attract the financing? And so what we've done is we've created a blueprint to be able to finance the meat processing facility.
Okay, thanks. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to blaze ahead here. Consent calendar, we have a number of items on the consent calendar, and we just added-
I would like to pull item D for a little discussion.
Okay, I am-
B is in boy?
B is in boy?
D is in dog.
Oh, D.
D is in dog. Okay.
Delta.
Yes, and I am going to recuse myself, because I am in negotiations on a employment relationship with the Center for the Arts.
Okay. So, well, let's take that first, because we just lost one of our council members, and then we'll go back to the rest of the consent calendar. So this has to do with transferring assets and signing, executing a lease agreement with, with the Center for the Arts in this newly-established 501(c)(3) Cultural Arts Limited Partnership. For those, I don't think there's a chance that somebody here doesn't know what exactly what we're talking about. This is the, the old Women's Improvement Club building, that's just two doors down right here, that's been the Willetts Cultural Arts Center, in a city building for years and years. It was re-modeled and extensively upgraded a number of years ago, continuing up to today by local labor and people active in the Art Commission and the Art Program. About three years ago, it, its energy waned, you know, the people, the same level of interest in that went away. We had trouble finding people that would serve on the Cultural Arts Commission to be a liaison between us and the city to keep that functioning on a daily basis. We had a discussion here at the council on many occasions, and we have elected to look at some other directions. Kind of a model was the Frontier Days organization that has run a, a event, multiple events for the city for close to a hundred years on city property, through a long-term lease with volunteer help, and they've done a remarkable job of, of being able to survive the generational shift of their, of their volunteers, and yet another, you know, another round of people involved is, the last ones sort of gave out. And we hope that that's the model that, that the cultural arts are, I hope that's the model they're pursuing, and, but we do have a group that, we put together an agreement, Jim has, that gives them a, I think, a relatively reasonable window to test out their process and their group, and a five-year lease on the building, the facility, and a lot of autonomy to run the program. Very limited participation from the city, very minimal landlord oversight. We really expect them to do all the heavy lifting in this project, and we've given them a facility that's in, I think, in, not, not top-notch repair, but it is, it's a pretty nice facility. It's got meeting rooms, it's got gallery space, it's got an assembly room upstairs. And so, as a result of the last five months or so of effort, we have come to this point where we have this lease agreement, and I think Ron has a couple of questions about the lease, I would assume.
Yeah, this is the first chance we've had to look at it after we directed legal counsel to prepare it. So I like it, you know, everything is fine, but I just have a couple of little points and questions. On page two and three, items seven and eight, it refers to utilities and repair and maintenance. And on the one, under repair and maintenance, it says that the tenant shall maintain the leased premises, including the grounds, restroom facilities, et cetera, et cetera. And then, sentence later, it says that the landlord shall maintain, as necessary, the roof, plumbing, and electrical systems. There may be a distinction between the restroom facilities and the plumbing systems, but I'm, I'm just wondering, do we need to clarify that?
Well, the, the intention in crafting it this way was that the tenant should not be responsible for the big-ticket items.
Okay.
If, if there's a major plumbing problem resulting in a twenty thousand dollar bill or something, it wouldn't be fair to put that on the tenant. Likewise, if there's a roofing or electrical substantial problem, that's not on the tenant. The idea was that the tenant should maintain the leased premises with the exclusion of those big-ticket items, with the exclusion of items that are called major systems.
Okay, well, I guess my question was, is it, it's probably clear, maybe I'm splitting hairs, but you know, we get into the hair-splitting business from time to time. And is it clear that there is a distinction between plumbing and restroom facilities? Or should we clarify that a little bit more?
Well, I'm open to suggestions. I mean, I, what, what was attempted here is to, is to put on the landlord the responsibility for maintaining the major systems, and they are identified as the roof, plumbing, and electrical systems, and the major structural components, as opposed to maintaining the grounds and the restrooms and the walkways and the parking areas. And so if a tub, if a toilet gets plugged up, I think that's a restroom facility that's on the tenant to fix that plugged-up toilet.
And if-
If there's a major problem with the plumbing structures and the walls have to be broken into to fix the pipes, that I would consider to be a major system.
Okay, so, so if you need a rooter-rooter, for example, to unplug a toilet-
I think that's the tenant's responsibility.
But that gets into the plumbing. And I understand part of the issue was that there was a tree out front where the roots were impinging on the, the pipes. So that's what I'm saying, it seems like there's this gray area that maybe it needs to be clarified just a little more specifically. I mean, I understand the intention, and I support that, but you know, if, if something happens in one of the restrooms, there could be a question raised as to whose responsibility is.
So would we want to add just a, for example, in parentheses?
I don't know, maybe Ron has an example. It's suggested language.
I think the parties are clear on this, the parties to the agreement, but I-
I mean, do you see any kind of possible, you know, that's not my responsibilities, you know, yours?
Well, there's always the potential, but I, I think this is pretty clear.
I think, I think what we're going to do here, myself looking at it, is that this is a, a nice medium-term relationship commitment, and if we experience those kinds of issues, those will tend to be remembered in a five-year period, and I think we would address that as to, we wish to continue a relationship that is calling on, on us to do chores that we don't interpret as being part of the agreement. And I, I'm comfortable with doing it that way. I don't, I, I feel like we have to, have to have some level of trust in this process, and we can't, we can't wordsmith every toilet blockage, just about, into, into trying to do that.
I don't want to get specific on toilet blockages.
Yeah, no, I mean, I just-
Okay, well, I'm fine with that. I just, you know, I just get a little crazy sometimes, because-
Yes, you do.
Well, you know, what they say, the devil's in the details, and we have all seen where something can go south based on-
Absolutely.
...your understanding. So, I'm sorry.
This is similar to the agreement we have in place with Frontier Days, and that relationship has worked very well for many years, and-
All right.
-the relationship with the Arts Center folks over the last few months to get to this point has worked very well.
And again, I have no issues with the whole, you know, the whole idea, it's just these, getting these things in. So paragraph seven on the utilities, it says that the, the city will pay the water and sewer service, provided at landlord's expense, and I'm, I'm fine with that. But you know, the what-if situation comes up. What if there's a leak? If one toilet that is a restroom facility runs for, you know, a week and nobody discovers it, and water's being poured down? You know, the city's going to wind up paying for the water that goes down the drain. I mean, and again, I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, except trust that there's going to be due diligence.
I didn't, I wasn't trying to, I'm pretty sure, I may be wrong about this, maybe we do, but, but the city does not pay for water in any of its buildings.
That's correct.
And it may not even have a meter. So, it may have a meter, I don't know, but-
I'm just saying, we wouldn't want that to happen. We would want them to be responsible.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's not about the money. I mean, obviously, it's, it's about the potential waste of water, and that's all. I just wanted to point out that I hope that they will check their ports and make sure they're not running. Okay, I'm-
I do have a question under twelve D, myself, and it is, it has to do with filing a mechanic's liens.
I'll put a page-
That's on page five, towards the bottom.
Fourteen D.
Oh, fourteen D.
Oh, excuse me, I just went to the top, I didn't, yes.
Fourteen, D, D is in-
D is in, yeah, and-
Donut.
You know, I can see where there are instances where, as a sub-lease or, or of that property, that they would contract to have the floor resurfaced, or, I don't pick anything, and it is certainly a common practice for some contractors to file mechanic's liens in order to, you know, ensure that they get paid for their work. And this, this anticipates that and sort of, it's a, but it's an act of good faith that they, they resolve the mechanic's liens without the city's, it being the city's ultimate responsibility, and is there any, is that tight enough language for that?
You know, this is, this is standard boilerplate language that I got from some other commercial leases, to protect the landlord from tenants who hire contractors and then the property gets impaired with liens.
Right.
And so, so it provides that, you know, that the tenant should do all things reasonable to prevent the filing of mechanic's liens. Obviously, there could be work where it's responsible for the mechanic to file one, and then it says, "If any such lien shall be filed, tenant shall cause the same to be discharged to record within twenty days," and it goes on. So there's just language in here obligating the tenant to take care of a mechanic's lien that's filed, and make sure that it gets satisfied and removed from the city's title.
Is, I mean, again, maybe this has been too much detail, is it, would it, I just, I guess I'm concerned in the fact that they don't, you know, if they become, if they, in their last breath of solvency, they have the building painted and the guy, or, you know, some twenty-five thousand dollar job done or something like that. Again, maybe I'm starting to sound like Ron.
Which isn't always a bad thing.
But, but I had a little, you know, I just, that kind of popped out at me.
Well, in that, in that scenario, whether it's painting or anything else, some twenty-five thousand dollar bill ends up having your title impacted by a lien, you'd want the tenant to be responsible to pay that, city would, and satisfy it and get it off, and-
I guess in the other sense, against my own argument, is that cities never sold a building in its life, and having a lien on a city building is, may not, may not ever really reward you for your efforts.
You know, if, if it's the council's wish, we can strike that, that paragraph.
No, I, I'm, anybody else got anything on this?
Can we just move that item separate from the consent calendar?
Yes, we are, I'm looking to do that.
So I'm moving that we are doing-
Actually, we need two motions, I believe, to, for this project, because first I need a motion on resolution 2016-dash, maybe one or two, or what is it?
We have a single resolution.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right. Okay, should we make them all, I will make it all in one motion, if that's okay.
Oh, we, do we have this both in one resolution?
Yeah.
Dissolving and?
Yeah.
Yes.
And execute, okay, fine. All right.
So I shall move.
So your motion is to dissolve the- So, your motion is to dissolve the-
The Cultural Arts Commission, transferring it to the Willet Center for the Arts LLC, and to approve the execution of the lease agreement.
To the same entity.
To the same entity.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Do you have any public comment on this impending change? Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Strang?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Warrenstein?
Yes.
Yes, and I'm really excited that we have some new energy in that facility, and I wish they were here tonight. Do we have anybody from here tonight? I don't think, doesn't look to me like-
She stepped out of the room at the time.
We better get Holly back in.
So, yeah, could someone grab Holly in the room?
We're having a big signing tomorrow at the mixer.
Signing?
Good.
Signing of the contract.
Oh.
Oh. One, one pen for each letter, so they can hand them out?
Maybe it'll better show up. So, now we have the remaining consent items. I would think that maybe, oh, yeah, A, B, C, and E. Is there a motion on those?
I'll, I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Any public comment on those items? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Warrenstein?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madam?
Yes.
Marburg?
Yes.
When you get the informational reports-
We are there.
I would like to request on the Willis bypass project updates, and I understand, you know, we've had the report instead of a face-to-face presentation, and that works. But, there is the section about the mitigations, and I understand that, you know, there's been some public concerns about the success of the mitigations, how far they've gone, et cetera, et cetera. And by reading the report, it's, they're saying that, you know, a lot of the stuff is happening or is going to happen. I think it might be nice, you know, a good idea if they came, since they haven't been here for over a year, and just talked about exactly the details of that. I think it might put some, some concerns to rest, I hope.
Do you want to make that request?
Or turn it into a-
Hasn't yet, but it might, yeah.
Hey, we have that excitement we want.
I would just second that I think it would be not so much for the mitigation, but it would be nice to have an in-person update again about the, their timeline and, you know, where it's all set, and when they think it's going to open, and what community involvement there could be in that process, and those sort of things.
I think that's true, you know, and we will have an ad hoc committee meeting report here, you know, a few minutes about a Caltrans interaction that we had recently, so. Right to appeal, consult item six this evening's, I usually read it, but if you have your heart set on appealing a decision that we've made tonight or in the future, or in the past, you might want to consult that. City manager reports, do we have anything?
Yes, a few items. Just wanted to give an update on how things are going with the Main Street planning process. We continue to have our advisory group meetings once a month and project team meetings every other week. So, we are basically in the process of nailing down the logistics and details for this charrette process, which again is scheduled for April 18th through the 22nd. I believe a information, detailed information about all of those, that schedule will be coming out in the next couple of weeks or so, maybe two, three weeks. I met with Pat Johnson and some members of her staff, and actually a couple of district board members, to review the agreements that we have for shared facilities with Willets Unified. So, that would be the pool, the tennis courts, and Bechtel Grove Middle School Gym. And so, we're in the process of getting some more information, putting together a list of needs and some standard operating procedures, so that we can then look at some updates to those agreements. One in particular that does need to be updated, it has a timeline associated with it, is the pool, which expires next, we're on the Fourth Amendment, that expires next January, so this is a time that we need to be crafting a, the next amendment for that.
That's the amendment, the agreement between the school district and the-
Right, it lays out who's responsible for what-
Who does what?
And the pool season, and, you know, general usage, maintenance and repair responsibilities, so on and so forth.
I hear the term amendments, I get chills.
Why is that?
We've had amendment issues in the past.
You know, it's a, it's a, I thought it was a very productive meeting, and frankly, the last two or three years, things have worked pretty smoothly between the city and the district on these facilities. So, this is really just, these matter, you know, these agreements need to be reviewed and updated. Not, not everything is controversial. On Monday, we had our annual inspection of the airport by Caltrans Division of Aeronautics, and that went just fine. We talked to, it was Chris Brooks that flew in from Sacramento, and Dave Dietz from Eden Hunt, who's the consultant that we're using for the airport layout plan update, came up for that meeting, really to talk about the trees that, you know, have been an identified problem for some time, and coming up with a, some sort of proposal, so that we can finalize the airport layout plan. So, in the near future, we'll be bringing something to the city council to, some recommendation for your consideration on that.
Low-impact recommendations?
Yes.
It's appropriate that they fly in for that.
Before you leave the airport, I had a conversation with an individual who uses the airport, and he had some concerns about, I guess you can call it trespassing, people who went onto the grounds and maybe rode their motorbikes around, or flew airplanes or things like that, and how dangerous he felt that it was to the pilots. And maybe that's something that needs to be addressed.
Well, that, that's the sort of thing that should be reported to the airport manager, who then would contact the police department, who has jurisdiction over that.
Like speeding on the street, okay.
So, if there's, I mean, if there's a problem-
Or it should be reported when it's happened.
Right, that's the point I guess I was trying to make.
Yeah.
It, it's hard to address that after the fact.
In a related matter, I can't say, man, they have been nailing people on Blosser Lane.
Really?
Big time, so I would warn anybody that-
Was going to speed excessively, that's good to know.
Using Blosser Lane, I bet you I've seen six citations there in two days.
Wow.
I don't know if I let the cat out of the bag, but-
Well, if it's a deterrent.
Anyway, sorry.
Couple more things. We'll be having the mid-year budget review before the council on March 9th, along with some budget amendments. Suzie is not here tonight, she's in Palm Springs at the Parma Conference. I know, along with Sergeant Donnie.
I told you that story before.
Otherwise, we would have scheduled it for tonight, but due to, due to that scheduling conflict. At the last council meeting, I shared with you that we were in the process of hiring an assistant engineer, but I did not share who that was, because we needed to get through a few more steps. So, I'm happy to share tonight that it's Suzanne Lutzis, who is a Willets High School graduate. She did a summer internship with the city about three summers ago, and has since graduated from Humboldt State, is an engineering in training, EIT, and we're excited to have her start with us, which will be next Monday. She brings some pretty solid environmental experience with her.
And will we be able to have her come down here and welcome her?
Yes. Yes.
That would scare her away too soon.
She's, she's excited to come back to Willets. She enjoyed her, her time with us.
Native Tolman.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. And then lastly, just a reminder that the division meeting for the League of California Cities, the city gets to host this, this time around, and that will be happening on Friday.
Good, thank you. Move over to department recommendations, and anything from the city clerk?
No, she said-
Oh, what'd she, what'd she take?
It's just the dinner on Friday.
Oh, okay.
700s, you get them all?
Obviously, we don't have finance.
Oh, you should probably mention.
And do we have any human resource reports done? Mr. Legal?
No.
Chief?
No.
All quiet in Mayberry. I did, I, oh, well.
Do you have some?
I, just jumping back to HR really quick.
For sure.
We have another recent hire, Robert McKenzie, started with the water treatment plant a week ago.
Great.
Right. Community development. This one is our new city planner.
I'd just like to say that our city manager is an excellent talent evaluator and recruiter. I'm glad to see that we pulled in another local talented person to join our force. Dusty Dooley, city planner, what we've got in front of you is a request to authorize a contract with the consultant group Placeworks to complete our traffic circulation and connectivity study of downtown Willet's streets and alleys, for the amount not to seek $65,000. Where's the money coming from? We received a $65,000 grant from the MCOTG overall work program to satisfy this project. The, what is it? It's a, it's a study to look at the circulation, connectivity, the safety of our streets, our alleys, our parking lots, our lanes, basically everything except Main Street and our downtown business area. They're going to be looking to identify improvements to the roadways and to the aesthetics to make them safer for all users, cars, bicycles, pedestrians, as well as make sure it's friendly for our businesses and attracts people and businesses to our community. We're looking to have a finished product in front of the council in September of this year. This is a separate project from our Main Street project, although it's certainly related. And so, this, you may notice that we hired a separate consultant group for the Main Street project, and we've gone with a different consultant group, Placeworks, for this project, and we're making that recommendation anyways today. And, you know, there was some discussion amongst staff as to which way we would lean, whether it was, you know, worth going with the same consultant group for both projects, or if there's worthwhile going with a separate group. Certainly, there are some trade-offs. Staff recognizes the need for some additional planning and communication between the two groups to make sure the projects merge successfully. We have identified some places for some synergy with those two projects, including the April charrette planning fair, and maybe the street fair in, in May, June as well. Placeworks and the other consultant group, WRT, have worked together successfully before. The forefront folks on both parties are, are former colleagues, graduates of UC Berkeley, and so there already is some communication between, between both groups. And-
What's, what's the border of that? What are-
The, like, the border of the scope, basically?
Yeah, it's essentially downtown, you know, Highway 20 and this way, there is a map-
Two blocks up, well, yeah, I saw the map, but I didn't really see a, it's a blackened area right there?
Yeah.
Darkened area.
Yeah, that was included in the RFP, and so I understand that that's the area that we are going to be focusing on.
Okay, thank you.
It's possible that it could extend out if it makes sense, but we're not going to lock ourselves into that box.
But we're not going to take on, we have a numbers, a numbers of alleys throughout town that come up from time to time as, you know, people treating them like a private driveway, or-
Encroaching, yeah.
So, that might be a little more of a-
Going beyond their purpose as an alley, yeah, exactly, to become private driveways, and that wasn't there in town.
Not to go out to those.
Is this going to take up lighting on the porcy lots?
If it relates to safety, maybe?
Yeah, no, there's a link there, that's, that's something that we could address in this, in this report.
The parking lot on Wood Street is really dark in the winter, especially at, you know, for people shopping late on Christmas December, and I think you need to look into that part.
Madge?
Yeah, I, I'm glad you were upfront about sort of pro and con of having a different consultant on this than the Main Street project, but it does seem somewhat difficult to look at all the alleys and the connectivity and omit Main Street, which is sort of what you're doing, because Main Street is in the other project. I mean, provided that these two consultants can connect to the connectivity somehow, I'm just, it's a little challenging in my mind how they're going to deal with, you know, a lot of the pedestrian safety has to do with crossing Main Street, so, so it's somewhat more challenging.
Our public works director is pointing out that it's the same traffic engineer for, for both projects, so that, that review is going to be done by one party and then shared with both consultant groups to be used for their individual projects.
This is probably a very small point, but was this job put out for competitive bids, or was not that-
Yeah, there, there was an RFP process, I believe we received four responses, and ultimately staff chose to go with Placeworks.
Is this, is this a, is this fulfilling any other state requirement, or is this totally an elective process that we're doing at the city?
It was an elective process.
Yeah.
It really has to do with when, you know, the, the fact that we're getting Main Street back and that whole planning process is really, you know, that's up to us, as far as, as far as wanting to complete that.
And I should point out that this isn't tied to Caltrans and their schedule for getting a design plan done for Main Street, this is independent of that, and, and we're not, you know, locked into getting something done on a certain deadline to, to get something into their design, this is our own independent project.
But there will be, I can only assume there will be a focus on Van Lane and the merchant proposal for enhancements on Van Lane.
Van Lane was one of the alleys that we've already been talking about doing some, some design work on.
Okay.
And I'm encouraged that they are going to be present and, you know, at the other planning process, so that they can be aware of how they're going to fit in and work together.
Exactly.
Because, yeah, that was my main thing, it's like, okay, how are these, how are these separate and not-
And I'll even mention that, that both consultant groups are, seem to be happy that, that they have each other to sort of work off of. So, there might even be some potential peer review among those two groups. So, that's another advantage of having the two consultants.
Would somebody care to make a motion on this?
I will.
Thank you.
Move to take the recommended actions to enter into the contract with Placeworks, et cetera, et cetera.
Any public comment on this item? Let's go, any further up here?
Yeah, just one, one quick thing, which is that I understand that this is focused on the downtown core, but I do think we have connectivity issues with South Willets.
Right.
Specifically Railroad Avenue, I think, would help a lot. And I understand that that's not in the scope of work, but I kind of would like it to be.
One of the, one of the thoughts that we've been talking about is, is focusing in on some alleys and lanes that, you know, maybe if we, you know, find out some, some good designs, some good ideas for those alleys, it's something that can carry over to some of the other streets and alleys that we have on the south side.
Madge?
And then my only other comment is that I hope that they will be very specific about priorities and ways to fund the improvements that they recommend, so that this doesn't just get put on a shelf, and at the end of it, want to actually see improvements.
Cost, priority, and funding mechanisms for the improvements are included in the scope.
All of the reports that they're going to review.
We don't, we don't put them on the shelf anymore, we put them in a box.
That's encouraged.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Strang?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Yes.
Warrenstein?
Yep.
Yes. Thanks, Dusty, it'll be a fun project to work on.
Yeah.
Rod, can you fill us in on public works and engineering?
I just have a couple items water-related, everything else has been pretty, pretty status quo and pretty quiet. We submitted a request to the Division of- We submitted a request to the Division of Safety of Dams, the dam safety people, to put the flashboards in Centennial next Tuesday on March 1st. Things have dried out, and inflow's already going down, and runoff's already decreasing, so we're going to get them in early, try to fill Centennial for the first time in a few years. Our initial response was it's going to be okay. It's going to be...they're going to approve it. We're just waiting for the formal actual acceptance. So the other project is the three million gallon tank repair, which started on Monday. It actually started last week when we took the three million gallon tank offline. There were some hiccups, and let me see here. I'm going to draw it on the board here because it's kind of hard to explain. Up on the hill, we have the treatment plant, and then we have the million and a half million gallon tank here. And it comes down the hill to the PRV in front of the new hospital.
What's a PRV?
Pressure-reducing valve.
Okay. You don't have to write it, I'm just curious.
Reducing vault.
Yeah.
Pressure-reducing valve. 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 Then it goes both up to the three million gallon tank, and it also supplies town. And with this, three million gallon tank also supplies pressure to areas such as the old hospital and also around town. All the way over, we're going to use Northbrook because that was a point of where we had some issues. So typically, the PRV is set between fifty-two and fifty-five pounds PSI pressure. So we have one thirty-five PSI coming down from the million and a half, and that's typically reduced to fifty-two to fifty-five. And then it fills and supplies town, and it's typically between three hundred gallons per minute and nine hundred gallons per minute. So when we cut this off, at that moment, when we cut it off, we took pressure away from the old hospital and different parts of town. When we transitioned over, this was no longer there, so we had to increase these numbers to get adequate pressure, especially to this area. So when we did that, this went from fifty-two to fifty-five to sixty PSI. And what that does is that increases pressure here, so we have adequate pressure in the hospital area, but it also increases pressure all around town. So Northbrook, typically forty-five PSI, jumped up to fifty-five PSI.
And was there a moment where it was low?
Right.
Okay.
So at this...when at the transition time, the pressure dropped, fire alarms went off based on the low pressure at the whole hospital. Same thing happened in Northbrook, and we had some other issues around town.
Our system went wet, too.
Yeah.
Our system went wet, too.
Okay, so there was some...we did this...we did a trial run before, and we...I think we got alarms here. But there was even an alarm, I believe it's middle hospital, when this transition happened. Oh, what night was it? One of the nights.
I think...well, I can tell you, it might even have been Sunday night.
Yeah, it was over the weekend?
I think it was.
Yeah.
Sunday night. I think it was.
Right. So initially...
One-thirty in the morning.
Yeah. Initially, we increased it to sixty-two PSI to maintain adequate pressure up here. I think it was on Friday. It was Thursday night.
Is that the new hospital?
Thursday night. This is the old hospital.
Oh, the old hospital.
So that old hospital area, all that area and the houses up there are dependent on the level in this three million gallon tank. If this drops low, I think it's thirty-two feet, then pressure is an issue up here. So we have to keep the three million gallon tank, and that's online, up here. So it was Thursday night over here on Railroad and East Valley. What happens is when you turn the pressure up all around town, you either make some small leaks bigger, or you identify leak spots in your distribution system. So we had a major leak at East Valley and Railroad, which, since this is on demand, the PRV operates on demand, so if the town's demanding water, it's going to increase its flow. This was up to two thousand gallons per minute that night. So the other thing that happens when this goes up is we start getting that iron manganese stirred up in the pipes, and we get some brown water. We fixed this leak. We turned this down to sixty. I think the system has stabilized. There...Northbrook had a couple of pipes break, and Scott was over there today looking at the damage, and we're going to fix. Just a pipe broke in the attic and damaged some sheet rock, and they had to have another root come out and fix it. I guess that's who it was. Anyway, we're going to have to send us the bill so we can make those repairs. Don't forget anything. That's pretty much it.
How much longer will the tank be offline?
The tank should hopefully be offline for another three to four weeks. That's what we're hoping. It could take longer, but...
And then what do we need to...
Can you feed any of your...any of your emergency water in here now? Would that be helpful?
We can. We need to. It's been...since Thursday, since we turned it down to sixty, we haven't had any problems, so...
And are we expecting problems when we make the switch back?
I'm sure when we make the switch back, we'll have low-pressure alarms go on again.
So we'll...
Now that we know...
We can inform those people?
We...and they're aware of the situation. Before we're in the situation now, we didn't expect this. We'll run the other side.
And Rod, I don't know that you mentioned it yet, but there hasn't been any work done on that tank since nineteen seventy-nine?
So this tank has been active since nineteen seventy-nine. So this switch, this PRV went in in two thousand and five, I believe, to control flow. But since nineteen seventy-nine, this has been an active... It's been an active part of the distribution system, storage, and we expected some issues. And it goes without saying, I think.
But on the upside, you were able to find some weaknesses in the system and repair them under a controlled condition.
There was a consideration to leave it at sixty-two so we could find our weak spots and repair some of them. For the time being, we're going to keep it down at sixty.
That certainly...someone had asked me why there...or, you know, Facebook chatter. Why is there no pressure by Brookside? And so I guess that must have been it.
Yes.
Interesting.
Anything else we done?
That's the big thing.
Other than juggling pressure?
Well, you know, break some eggs every once in a while.
That's a project we have to get done, yeah.
That tank is vital to the system, and...
Absolutely.
We were wearing it out by not having...
So we would just ask that people...if people are having difficulties, they let us know. It seems like people usually do, but, you know, like, some of the alarms we weren't aware of in the first switch over, so...
I had a couple of phone calls on Sunday when they saw leakage, water accumulating on Bechel Road, where the tank was draining. And it was Sunday, and, you know, they just wanted to bring to my attention, and they said, who should I call? I honestly wasn't sure. I called Adrian. I figured, what the heck? But is there emergency number that needs to be, you know, put out in the public?
Police business line.
Is that...
Yeah.
Okay.
Call the PD.
Okay.
Yeah. But the non-emergency.
Not 911.
Okay.
The non-emergency line, yeah.
Good, thank you. I called Adrian anyway, so...
Thanks, Rod.
That's what I'm here for.
Okay, we'll move to council and committee reports. MCAG?
Did not meet.
LAFCO?
Did not meet.
MTA?
Yes, they met, special meeting February nineteenth to talk about general manager salary and, you know, who was coming in on the applications for the new general manager position, and decided to go ahead and interview the top five candidates on March eighth. So we'll be doing that, and hopefully, we'll find somebody who fits the bill. The main thing going on at MTA.
All right. Emsa?
Haven't met.
Lee, he has.
He meets Friday?
Meets Friday here in town. Water and wastewater.
They were set up for next week or something.
We're having a...we are having a wastewater ad hoc committee meeting with Brooktrails to discuss some of the settlement terms, or, you know, integrating some of the settlement terms. We're in that discussion phase.
That's the ad hoc meeting as opposed to the standing committee that's listed here.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's right. Revite Ed?
I believe Revite Ed is meeting... Okay. Revite Ed is meeting soon, and we have just appointed new members, so...
Just appointed new members. That's good. We had a little report on finance last meeting, and we were...will have...that's coming up at the next meeting. They had ad hoc committee. Jim circulated some reference debt information the other day, and I think we're actually going to meet tomorrow, right? Tomorrow morning at some point.
A question. Is that committee open to people of public attending?
No.
I've gotten at least one call of concern that people would like to be able to participate.
Well, and they will be able to... They'll be...participate when we come back here. Ad hoc committee certainly does...will come back with a recommendation or several recommendations, and that will be fully vetted in the public. Well, that's...there it is, the JPA feasibility study for wastewater. That's what I was referring to in the wastewater deal. We did have a...the Caltrans relinquishment project. We had a discussion with three or four Caltrans people the day before yesterday or something like that. Relative to the project, the freeway project, they are planning around a grand opening or, what did they call it, something like that, on September sixteenth. So that is...they don't foresee that the Ryan Crete structure...the project won't be done, but they are...the complete project won't be done, but they will be...they believe they'll be ready to transition traffic on September sixteenth. So found that out.
Tentatively, they...
Yeah, it's certainly tentative, you know, how they can do that from this distance away and be that specific. I'd previously heard from them, dates as early as August and as late as October, so it seems to be a nice middle-of-the-road compromise from a couple of different dates I'd heard. So the other thing was, you know, is trying to make a meaningful blend of our planning process with the relinquishment process, and we spent quite a bit of time discussing that. And there is...it's tight. That's all I can tell you. I guess that they're...it's a tight schedule. There's...they explained that there are several ways to blend a...to change the scope of a project, you know, or to influence the scope of a project. One is at the initial planning process where they're claiming they're sixty percent complete with their planned specs and...what do they call it?
Estimates.
Estimates. We don't really...not sure that that's accurate, but we don't have any way of really... But anyway, that's what they're saying.
The right-of-way?
And, you know, there's a...there are no right-of-way acquisitions. They don't need to take any property and fee, but they have some...something like eighty different spots along the relinquished roadway that where they need...Rod, help me here, construction easements?
Temporary construction.
Temporary construction easements. And as I understand it, these are to mainly in the curb cuts to accommodate ADA access around a curb cut, you know, where they go behind the curb cut and put a three-foot piece there. These kind of things. But it has to do with that. So they're...they need to negotiate these encroachment...these construction easements with all of these eighty parcels of property. And that is a...that's a driving, you know, it's a driving issue when they need to... They're starting that process or in that process now. The right-of-way gal was at this meeting as well. Holly, what else am I missing? Anything?
I think that's most of it.
Okay.
I think it's going to be important to stay on...obviously, stay on top of it and make sure that we're working together so that we have as much input as we can in the process. And I have a related item, but not for that. I'll do it under council member reports.
Okay. Then let's move then to...is there an EDFC? We had an EDFC presentation. Do you want to expand on anything there?
Just to say that we did meet on February eleventh, and EDFC is putting some of EDFC's funds into the Menacing Oak project so that the investors have a fallback safety net in case anything doesn't work.
So they're collateralizing the lending of the investors?
That's right. They're putting in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars so that a hundred and fifty thousand of the investors' money is in reserve for...in case something goes wrong. So that was good. And on March tenth, we meet again, EDFC. A lot of loan activity going on.
But is there any collateral to that loan? Is it just a hard-money loan?
There's minimal...if you're talking about having...
Piece of real...first deed of trust?
Not really, but there's equipment. There is equipment, but there's not really... We're counting on Matt Gilbert's incredible plans, which are really very impressive. And he owns the property where this is all happening. He and his family. He lived there. They live on the property.
But they're not offering that up as a...
I don't believe so.
A security and...
I think the mill is separate, isn't it?
The mill is on the same property, but it's not their home, so they're not...they don't want to lose their home.
I didn't want to do that either when I went into business. So far, I have not been able to get away with it. But I've only been doing it for forty years. Okay, NCR, how are you guys doing down there?
NCR has not met since our last meeting, but remember I said that there was concerns about holdup of the Courthouse project in Ukiah? And it sounds like it is back on the public works agenda for March. So that could be very positive, and it could get the green light to go forward.
And keep NCR alive for another year?
Yep. Possibly more. But if that doesn't happen, then I don't know if it will.
Okay, let's have any council member reports and recommendations? You said you had...
Yeah, I had two. One is when I had the chance to grab the Caltrans guy at our last...at the ad hoc meeting. I checked in about on-highway signage. The city is interested in working, partnering with the chamber to review Caltrans's plans for the signage they're going to do anyway, which is, you know, the official, this is Willet's exit, you know, fuel, those kind of things. We would love to see what they're planning on... We would love to see what they're planning on putting forward, because we might have some input. And then secondly, and this is a different Department of Caltrans, like a welcome-to-Willets sign that could have rotating banner space for when there's events in town. So I came and, went and spoke to the chamber board today, and Matt Brady got back to me on who to reach out to for that, so we'll have, we'll have more to come on that. And I have one other item.
Go ahead.
That's all right.
You've got the floor.
The other item has to do with the perception problem that we have around the water system that just, because of the violation of the average back in October, I felt like staff did a really good job explaining it here, but I do think we have an ongoing public perception about water quality, and I, I think that's something that we as a city are just gonna have to work on and do some public educating over time. I just want to state that I do drink the water all, you know, I drink Willets water every day. That's, that's my primary water source. I've heard comments in the community about how, oh, I, you know, prefer bottled water, and I just want to voice my personal opinion that I think that our tap water is better than bottled water. I'll just say that. I'm just stating, it's my, it's my personal opinion, but I think that we really have a lot of work to do as a city council to restore the confidence in the, in our water supply.
Yes, we have.
I know. We had, we had dinner brought in, and this is what was, this is what was available for, for dinner, and I appreciate that, but...
Normally, we don't.
But, but the pitchers, that's Willets water, and I, I... I shouldn't have brought it up, but I can only speak for myself in that I have complete confidence in our, in our crew up there, and I think we have work to do, work that I'm willing to do to assure our residents how good the water is that we have.
Well, I want to add to that, and I have another item, too, but I did mention to Adrian that I thought it was too bad that the notice that went out with the water bills, I know it had to, you know, it had to be what the state requires you to say, so there was all this legalistic stuff that had to be there, and, you know, understand that, but, but here at the council, we had a much more in-depth about what the averaging meant and how, what the current numbers really are, and how much improvement has been made in how we're dealing with it, and that didn't get said out to all the customers. So I, I hope we use every opportunity we can to, you know, to put forward that more complete picture. So that was one thing, just agreeing on that. And the other thing is, I wanted to mention that Willets Economic Localization is looking to co-sponsor with the Chamber of Commerce and with the city, a forum probably April seventh, might be April twenty-eighth, here in city council chambers, and the subject would be, where does our money go and how can we keep more of it local? So really, possibly, you know, focusing on consumers, where, where all of us spend our money. How can we look for ways to keep that local because that helps the whole economy? We already have Richard Willoughby is gonna be one of the presenters, somebody from the chamber certainly, and some other business, and maybe other expert.
I might suggest you get someone from Savings Bank as well.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
The biggest community bank in the county.
Okay.
Might be worth, it's where most of the people in the county have their deposits.
Yeah, any of you have any other suggestions for that? And I'd like to invite everybody to look for ways to keep their money local.
Put it in a local bank. So I, any, anything else? Anything in good and welfare?
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, I know you want to get out of here.
No, you can leave it at the closed session.
I was unable to attend an event that's going on tonight hosted by West Company about getting, getting businesses on Google, like basically helping your business be easier to find on the internet. A number of people from Willets were interested in doing that, and so West Company said that they could schedule a Willets-specific event, very much like that. So instead of putting Ukiah on the map, it will be putting Willets on the map where Willets businesses can find out how best to have people find them. So once we get a date on that, I'll let you guys all know.
Bruce, on the, on the subject of this cosponsorship of the, of this well, it'd be like a town hall forum, do we need to actually get direction from the council, or is that something the staff can go ahead and decide if the city wants to be a cosponsor besides having it obviously here in the city?
Well, I think that if, if, if they're looking for some financial...
No, nothing.
Something, they, they, they want the city to cosponsor it, I, I would think that it would need to be directed by the council would be a...
Yeah, we're not talking about a financial contribution.
Well, I mean, I think that, that's my, that's my two cents on it, and somebody may have a different opinion. I think when, when we put our name on a, on a community gathering, that we as a council probably should weigh in on it, that it's supported by the group to do that. But I've probably, hadn't been asked, I probably never would have personally. So let's move, we need now to, to adjourn the, well, not, we're not, we actually are adjourning the city council meeting because we are reconvening a special meeting that started before this council meeting. So this, I'd look for a motion to adjourn this council meeting and then accuse ourselves to the, to finish our special meeting, which is a exposure to litigation.
I'll move you adjourn.
I'm in favor?
Aye.
Aye.